Townhallstreams.com is selecting Bucksport. Questions and comments can be submitted prior to or during the meeting by emailing slosar@buxsportmaine.gov or during the meeting by calling 469-7368. Roll call, Jake?
Councilor Eastman?
Here.
Mr. Morrison?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bissonette?
Here.
Mayor Stewart?
Here.
Councilor Armstrong is absent. Councilor Downs?
Here.
Item four is considered minutes of previous meetings. We have council minutes from 10:27 to 22. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion second. Polls in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item five is correspondence. We have three Verona Police calls, one on October 24th, 2022, October 31st, 2022, and November 4th, 2022. Also a DAR thank you letter. Any comments? Next is organizations to consider introduce. We have none. Item seven is discussion items. First is infrastructure committee update 11/17/2022. Deputy Mayor Bissonette?
Hello. Yes, really briefly because most people were here for that, but we have, we've received a proposal from AIM, the owner of the former Verso Paper Mill site, as well as the landfill across the way, across from 15, excuse me. There's a proposal to consider a landfill for construction and demo type debris only that they've put forth to the town, as they phrase it, in a public-private partnership. The town would, for all intents and purposes, own the land, and AIM would be responsible for maintaining the landfill. Number of members of the public spoke. One thing that came out of that, that both the committee as well as members of the public were interested in, is obtaining a definitive list of the types of materials that would be allowed in that landfill. But after several, well, almost a full hour of discussion, the committee recommends moving this forward to the council for further consideration.
Thank you. Next is fuel cell technology from Ampeon.
You have in your packet some information that was provided from Ampeon Renewable Energy that wishes to propose to Bucksport the idea of offsetting additional electrical costs. I have it on here to find out if the council wants to refer this to infrastructure for further discussion. It's a relatively new process.
To council's pleasure.
No opposition?
No opposition. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Item C is Route 46, former town shooting range.
We have our public safety director here this evening. In the back, who can come to the front. We've had some, no complaints, but some concern raised over the range formerly used by the town's police department as a shooting range that is on Route 46, but its address is Upper Long Pond because the lot goes from Route 46 up to the sludge building on Upper Long Pond Road. But the site is quite grown up and, pardon, Chief.
We've had a citizen approach, one of the patrolmen out in that area about shooting, consistent shooting that's going on out there sometimes.
We're talking about where the old gravel pit is where the post-up targets?
Way back when, we used to shoot there, and we had the Army Corps of Engineers recommendable, those are the stuff. So there was a bank there, and it was all filled in, it's one pathway, and I believe the road was reconstructed closer, but you can't get off the road, but it's probably not the best place to be shooting at this point. So I don't know, I'm going to the council to see if we can post it.
Whose property is it?
It's the town's.
It is the town's?
Yeah, and I can pass this around so you can see it. It's the middle one. And the information with that, that's off the town's system.
Actually, it would have to be posted that no target shooting or whatever because public land is open for hunting.
Behind you, stop.
Right.
Is there, Chief, is there a reason that, I know you said it's not the best area, could you, just a couple of reasons why it's not the best area in case?
When we used to be out there, it was open, and it was like a pit. If you go out and look at it, it's now grown in with trees and stuff, so it's kind of like one lane. So only the shooting, there's a possibility of, say, ricocheting somewhere, I don't know where it would go.
Or somebody, somebody in the woods.
Right, or somebody hunting up the back, or if there is a berm there behind that you really can't see because the trees have grown, it's easy around it, over it.
Thank you.
Your recommendation?
I don't think it's safe to shoot there anymore.
Thank you.
Especially if letting people hunt on that, who said there's thirty, some acres from there that are beside the town.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Would you like that on or without?
Yep. Are we okay with that going to a resolve?
Yep.
Next is Bucksport Historical Society information.
You have in your packet some information from the Historical Society that was provided. They had viewed the October 27th meeting and offered some responses to questions raised about the paper making museum and all of that kind of thing. So I think that this response is looking for the council to take some action in some way as to whether or not you're going to consider their request for assistance in rehabbing that building.
I was looking at the ARPA rules. Is there a stretch, reading those rules, where money could be used for that? I could stretch it enough.
Well, I would be more comfortable in using the blanket revenue loss than I would trying to fit it into a square peg into a round hole, which aren't things that are related to that. But we've talked about this before, about whether we wanted to simply use the, every community had the option of using a whole lot of money, just in saying it was a revenue loss, check that one box, and you can spend it for anything. We hadn't chosen to do that because we didn't have a revenue loss, but I'm not sure that...
I mean, we've got to sit here and make a decision at some point here, and part of it is, do we want to increase usage down there with some of the space underneath if we move the building up? Or do we just say, no, we'll let it fall in the ground, then we'll have to take care of it in five to 10 years anyway? So, I mean, I'm at the point where I'm ready to make a decision and say that we throw some money at it and get it done.
I don't share it. I mean, we've got a Main Street.
That's fine.
Yeah, we've got a Main Street that...
Rich, you know, what does 90 hours a year do to a Main Street if that's in the center of Main Street?
Not a good, not a great use of the, not a great use of the property.
I mean, there's, I'm happy to talk to them about alternatives, if, you know, we could look at the American Legion if there was any interest, or a private home in the village. I mean, that's typically what historical societies are.
Right.
And I'll argue that the building area next to it, the open sign is not open much more than 90 hours a week.
I mean, the restaurant, I mean, you know, I mean...
But are you going to set up a downtown? You know, because they're not doing it doesn't mean that shouldn't be the model. I mean, if you want a vibrant Main Street, which is what the community has said, I don't see how something open 90 hours, 100 hours a year achieves that.
But if we make it better, is the possibility for it to be open? I guess that's where I look at it.
But they're not looking to do a year-round building.
They're not, but maybe there will be, when you make it better, they will come.
And will maintain that?
We're going to maintain it.
We would own it.
We own it now, we're going to maintain it one way or the other. And then, again, my thoughts, and I'm one person.
Yeah, I mean, it's putting something at the center of Main Street that's open, very limited, and I don't think any Main Street would say that's, you know, I feel that has a place, but it doesn't necessarily have to be on Main Street. I mean, I would love to see the collection preserved, but I just don't think it requires it to be on Main Street.
Do you feel that doing something with the building and moving it someplace else would...
I think there's avenues.
Rehabbing the building?
I wouldn't, I don't know, I think we could move it down if we redid the waterfront and make it a fundraiser for the Historical Society. They could do weddings, they could do weddings, graduations, reunions there, and rent out the space and have a revenue stream to support whatever they end up in. That would be one thought.
Other thoughts?
I think whatever we decide, like you said, we've talked and talked, we've been a, it's only getting worse, the mold, you know, the humidity and the mold, so we have to take action sooner than later, and I...
Or no action.
Or that. But I think myself, I'd be, I guess, more comfortable. I think Chunderly came out of ARPA funds, and I'm generally...
That wouldn't be illegal. I mean, it wouldn't be the way we've chosen to do it.
And that's where I, I mean, we've talked about it, I almost, I've been on the council for nine years, it seems like we've been talking about it since the whole time, and we have some, we have some ability, and if that's what we want to do, and I appreciate what you say, Mark, that maybe that's not what we want to look at on Main Street, but...
Well, let me make one more point. The Masonic Hall went for $150,000. Could have easily housed the collections, the entire collection, a good roof, good heat system, but there was no interest in doing that. I would have been more behind that than the dead, you know, but it's the biggest part of Main Street.
Anybody else?
Well, I think...
Wait in, this is deep.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, it, you know, there are a couple of options here in front of us, and I think the one that's been presented as kind of option number one is to put a daylight basement underneath what is the existing Historical Society, and not necessarily call it good, but that solves the immediate problem if that, if we entertain that option. To Councilor Eastman's point, if we do just that, I don't feel that is the best use of that space. I think if we're going to look at that long-term and we're set on the Historical Society staying there in that building, which is a unique building on Main Street, and I think does, despite the fact that it was moved, still has historic value, that maybe there's, if we're willing to lift that building and put a basement underneath it, there's other things we could do in addition to that, in that same space, that makes it more useful for the public, makes it more useful for everyone involved. It still begs the question whether that's the best use of that space in that location on Main Street, and I don't know that I'm the person to answer that. But I think if we're going to go in and take ownership of that and do that small bit, it almost behooves us to do the rest of it and say, we're not just going to lift the building, put it on a foundation and call it good, not heat the place and barely plummet, but invest a little bit more into it and make it something that more of the community can use. And then I feel it's more likely that that building is used for more hours than it's presently being used during the summertime. Again, that's an investment, though, and that's development, and I think I'd have to be convinced that we're the best group to do that.
For the usage of like the downstairs with every water design?
That's one possibility. You could put rest, public restrooms down there and eliminate the building that we have out in front of us. There's a number of ways we could go with that, but I think, I'm sitting here talking about something that could take two or three years, and I do understand that there's an immediacy to correct, you know, a problem at the Historical Society, too. But I just think it would be, I'll say it, it'd be a damn shame to just put that building up on a foundation, do nothing else, and let it sit there, except for the fact that it would alleviate the problem that the Historical Society is having right now with the moisture. But to Councilor Eastman's point, to do just that would be a waste of prime real estate on Main Street in Bucksport.
And I would agree. I think it would be a waste just to do that. But if we did do it as proposed and had the usage for the downstairs, then I would say, if we're going to do it, we go full in, and I know they mentioned that they wouldn't eat it or anything, but it probably needs to be if we're going to invest that type of money. I would go full in, so it could be used by the whole community.
But does the organization have the capacity to maintain or heat the place, or? I mean, it's, you've got to ask the question. I mean, otherwise we end up owning two ends of Main Street.
And we, I mean, we could negotiate that we own the building if we're going to invest.
Oh, absolutely.
I think we should, but that's a lot of taxpayers' money.
Well, there's a small wrinkle here. If you decide that you want to do everything, is that if the cost of that exceeds $300,000, you will be going to referendum on it even though it's ARPA money. The limit of expenditure here without border authorization on a project is $300,000. So even though it's ARPA money, it would still require a town vote if you decide that that is something that you want to pursue. I'm not saying good or bad, I'm just, it's just reminding that the cost that was identified on that proposal that included the other stuff was another $150,000.
To move it into the foundation?
No, that, to move it into the foundation, they said it was 150, somewhat, thousand, but to...
Finish it off.
Finish it and do, put the deck on and do all that kind of stuff, I think, was another 150.
Well, we had a quote on the whole thing, which was what? One, what was the total project? The project we had six years ago?
Three million.
Three million.
That was a little bit more extravagant than this one.
Yes.
A lot more, actually. So do you want to resolve on a, on a agenda, or do you want to kick it down the road?
Can I ask a question? Is it possible to move it across the street into the parking lot where the post offices? Everything on the water side, the town seems to own, and that's where our value is, that's where people go. We have the CSO building where Brons used to be, we have this building where business used to be here, and then we have the building where the Historical Society is. Those are probably the three most valuable pieces of property in this town, and for the taxpayers to not be able to get, and I'll say it, we're on the wrong side of the road. We should not be on the river. I'm sorry, I enjoy the view, but I'm here to work, and if I'm, if I'm here on this river, that's business or other people who can't use this to generate revenue for the town or bring people here. We had a Chamber of Commerce on Main Street, and the Chamber of Commerce doesn't even exist. So I would say, if it's feasible and possible, is there any way we can move that building to a less-used parking lot, and maybe you can even use the conjunction, the farmer's market, with the Historical Society there, and have them be open and work together in collaboration?
It's a great idea, Richard. Sounds like it's a lot cheaper, too. Now, remember, getting under the wires is going to be...
The wires are the issue.
But just to go across the street, would it be that big? I know the whole length of Main Street would be a major expense, but...
I don't know, but if we do a PPI and a VPI, there won't be any wires on Main Street at some point, which is...
How much is that town-owned lot worth to us?
The town, that parking lot?
No.
The town owns that lot where that building is sitting that we're discussing fixing up.
I dare to say around at least $250,000.
I'll take it.
$250,000.
Yeah, I'll take it.
No, it would, there's, if that building wasn't there, there's a whole lot of options for the town in terms of a business being there, but also improving our own waterfront amenities related to public bathrooms and the marina and that kind of thing.
How about we make a suggestion to put this on infrastructure, just to take a look at it, and maybe they can make a suggestion that Rich or somebody looks into the idea of moving it, and we can sort of move on, but we maybe can get some finality coming out of that, too. That work everybody?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Richard. Where was that, three years ago? DAR request for permission to put a plaque by the Jonathan Buck Memorial.
You have some information in your packet from the local DAR chapter who wants permission to put a plaque, not on the memorial, but adjacent to it, that identifies him as an Revolutionary War soldier, and it would, that would be paid for by the DAR, but they, in order to do that, they need a letter of permission from the community in order to allow that plaque to go adjacent to it.
Comments or questions?
Any objections?
Any objections?
So I'm okay to write a letter saying that it can go there? Okay.
Item F is van for senior center.
Okay, since we're talking about spending money, we've talked about the idea of a van for the senior center. You have in your, your packet information on a used van from Mobility Works, 2014, with 64,000 miles on it, at a cost of $54,533. I also have information on a new one that's from this same organization that is $137,000. The, the, this vehicle is, can be driven by anyone, it doesn't require a special license in order to drive it, which is one of the things, because they'll, our volunteers from the center would be operating it for the use of bringing people to meals or taking them to events, those kind of things. It is something that we've talked about prior to, that the senior resource group and our senior center volunteers and others have identified as a need for the center and for our seniors, and so my question is, what appetite does the council have for the purchase of a van for the senior center? And I've identified the price ranges between $54,000 and $137,000. In order to adequately, it would be handicapped accessible and be able to carry wheelchair, which is the, a critical component of what we're...
We'd be maintained, correct?
Yes.
I would suggest, if that's okay, if this isn't Herman or Handen, the used one?
Herman.
If it ever would be okay, but since Matt Pierce would be alone working on it, I'd go with Matt, I'd be willing to go with him so we could both put eyes on it and really take a look at it.
Oh, I, if the, if the council was thinking of doing that, it would need to go on a resolve, and between then, now and then, it would, an inspection by Matt and yourself, if you want to go, would certainly be required to see if this vehicle is something that would meet the needs and would be structurally sound for that purpose.
I mean, the pictures make it look all right, but it's still $50,000, and it's seven years old, or eight years old, so I think looking at it over closer would be viable, but...
Anybody else?
Do you want this on a resolve till we go look at it, or do you want us to not do that?
Again, we have talked about this, and we're not going to get this done, so it's on a resolve, then we'll make a decision one way or the other.
But in the interim, we'll do a site visit?
Sure.
So you'll at least have more information, is that...
Anytime I can go up on that, just as long as it's arranged with the sell-off.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. I believe that's all discussion items. First, the agenda item is resolved 2023/31A. So we have two resolves. One is to start the process with the consideration of elimination of the public easement on Gully Road, and 2023/31B is to not restart the process for the consideration of elimination of the public easement on the Gully Road. Could you please explain those?
Well, I had given you two. At your meeting last time, there was a considerable amount of discussion by a number of people about, on this topic. It was not clear to me at the end of the meeting from the council which direction you wanted to go, but you wanted a resolve. So you got two, one that says, basically, don't do anything, and the other one that says, start the process over again. Those, and that's what you have here. My recommendation is that you discuss and allow public comment on the whole topic and then determine, you can vote on both of them. I will tell you that there are five people that can vote this evening, and that if, whatever you do, four affirmative votes is necessary in order to adopt a resolve. So if it's three to two, it's defeated. If it's, I'm just laying out the rules here on how this goes, and that's why there were two. But I, my suggestion to you, Mayor Stewart, is that the discussion is open to what people want to give for input. If I may, just a couple things. At the last meeting, you asked me to do some research, which I did. Now I can't find it. In regard to the layout of this road and all sorts of things, and I met with surveyor Alan Gordon, who's done surveying in that area, but also a lot of surveying in Bucksport in general, and has, so I learned historically that I was wrong about how the road started, which is, the county did not lay out this road, the town of Bucksport laid out this road, and then in 1835, it discontinued this road. And then in 1835, Hancock County laid out this road, and the road went from Central Street up to Millvale, out across Jacob Buck, up in, around, and down until it got to Buck's Mills, there down to Jacob Buck Pond Road. And I asked Mr. Gordon how this, he said that what was common at the time was if a town discontinued a road and its residents or residents in it still wanted the road to be there, that they could petition the county to lay out the road, which is what happened. And, or what he assumes happened, it got laid out and it's a road, and that county maps shows it starting here and going all over the place. And then in 1981, the town voted to abandon that road from Buck's Mills down to the Jacob Buck Pond End, with the exception of seasonal maintenance of the end by Jacob Buck, the Jacob Buck Pond Road, which is what's, is what the actual statement said of that thing. The, I, I asked about, there's been discussion that the road is not in the right place, that it's not where it was originally laid out, that it had been moved, and I, I asked about... And I, I asked about, and he indicated that the only thing that could determine the, the original layout from the county was a survey that, that followed that original county layout, which would be an extremely expensive proposal. And the second problem, or the second concern is that although the road may have been laid out and not right in that, it is, it's where it is, and that it's been where it is for some time, and that if the town discontinued the public easement on that, that people who believed that they had had use of that for a period of twenty years or more could file a court claim for prescriptive use to continue the use of that road. That's, that's all private, that's not a town-related thing, but that's, that apart from a public easement, use of a, of an easement can create prescriptive rights to people who have used it over a long time. But that's a court action, not a town action. Our code enforcement officer went through the exercise of printing off all the deeds for the properties that are impacted or affected in some way connected to Gully Road. And the, there's some complications in that there's a Marsh Stream Realty survey that's recorded, that guarantees occupants of that certain rights to access over Gully Road, and that was never a subdivision. The question was raised today if the acreage was over forty acres on those lots, maybe that, okay, Mr. Cabello tells me that's not the answer. But anyway, the deeds to those properties convey rights over the use of Gully Road. That Marsh Stream Realty survey was never unapproved, it was never an approved subdivision by the town. And it was established in nineteen eighty-eight, which is seven years after the town abandoned the road in terms of maintenance. It's a, it's a complication, shall we say, in terms of rights of who does and who doesn't in, in part of that road. And the, the most difficult part is that in the deed to the property at the beginning of that, to the Morrison property, indicates that there's a, an exception in it that, that allows anyone within, with an interest in the Gully Road to cross that section of the Morrison, a section of the Morrison property, the southeast. The language is in the deed. That, that is, that creates a, a difficulty in that, that even if there were no public easement, the deed requirement to allow access exists on that property for people with an interest. And when I say an interest, it's a legal interest, a cited interest in it. The, the road use is, is, several people have contacted me to tell me that they did logging down there in that area, but it was never out through the Buck's Mills, and it always went out through the Jacob Buck Pond End, and that other contractor-type activities always went out the Jacob Buck Pond End. They did not access up through Buck's Mills. It wasn't, until the property was improved in the past couple of years, it, it would have not been possible to have used it in that manner. So in, in terms of, has the use changed? It has in some respects. Would be improved to the road, that, that traffic, so to speak, has increased in that area. And finally, it's my understanding that as of today, the condition of that piece of road from Buck's Mills down almost to Matthews is practically impassable because of mud and ruts that resulted from that, the use of the road in the past few days with the snow and that kind of thing. But anyway, I talked to a surveyor, I found out the origin, I have explained to you the deed issues that relate to this, and.
Comments from the public?
Start there. If you could just stand.
Good evening. I'm Mr. Sade. We turn on, I'm glad everyone's here.
If you could just dress up here though, too, because they can't hear you when you turn on.
Oh, they can, okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, so I only going to go over a couple of things tonight, I was only going to go over, but after Ms. Sade spoke here, I'd like to mention another thing. She says that all the work, everyone, no one been going through there for the last two years, only. That's it, totally incorrect, and I disagree with her a hundred percent. People do go through there. Mr. Morrison's brother hall logged up over there when he was a logger there, early. That road has been used for logging, construction work, et cetera, for a long time. Granted, the road has improved slightly in the last couple of years, it's a public easement. Of course, if people want to use it, they're going to fix it. That would be the people that want to use it. So, that's the thing I want to disagree with, Mrs. Sade, is this road has been used for a long time, two hundred plus of my years, this road has been there, should remain, in my opinion. Second, really, the first thing I want to go, but second now, is the, is my, our attorney, we have an attorney, couldn't be here this evening, but there was one point that he wanted me to put, that part on you folks, is, there's a term in law called public purpose, okay? So, people don't really understand, but I'm going to try to explain to you the best I can. So, a lot of you folks, maybe all of you, have heard of eminent domain, where you, a person or a group of people can't really stop a public purpose because they own the property. In other words, if I'm going to build a municipality or the state or the county is going to build a road through, and it's one person, for whatever reason, they have an apple or two or something, and they say, I'm not selling to you guys.
Can you hang on just one minute? Apparently you're not broadcasting. We can hear you, but.
Well, we want everyone to hear me.
You're all set.
Yeah, you can hear me good? Okay, thank you. Okay, so eminent domain, okay, take private land for public purpose, okay? Well, public purpose is also a law that's designed to protect the public, which is us guys, all of us in this room, public. So, when you take public land for a private purpose, there has to be a reason that makes it better for humankind, for the public. So you can take public land, as long as it's going to benefit the public more than it's going to hurt, okay? So, for example, if, if they were going to start, if someone, the Morsons, or they was going to have a, I have a Morrison Memorial Medical Center, for example, for profit. So this is a private group that's going to make profit on public land. They can't build this medical center without extinguishing this right of way. Now, people keep saying all the other things. We're talking about extinguishing this right of way, which means no more right of way ever. You really, as far as my attorney, and I agree with him, is you really just can't take public land for the, for an individual, or a group of individuals. You have to have public purpose. You have to have a reason so that the public is benefiting here. Okay, now, we can take this public land and we can benefit everyone by taking this public land. But you just can't take public land to benefit one or two people, or a group of people. You have to have the public involved. So that's public purpose, and that's, our contention is that's going to be a real obstacle for this town to overcome, is this public purpose. So that's getting him out of the way. What I want to talk about is people obeying the rules, setback violations. Now, when this all started, my understanding was, is the easement was too close to the Morrison's home. So, I'm thinking, you know, after the first meeting, that they, this was illegally closed down, and I was with Ms. Sade, and one of the last things she said to me on the way out of the room was, it's a horrible place for a road. And it just caught me by surprise, and I thought about it, and I thought, after I got out the door, I said, no, this is a horrible place for a house. Now, the Morrison brothers built this home in two thousand seven and two thousand eleven. At that time, they had grown up with this easement. People had been going by there since they were little children. They knew what this was. They didn't, they chose not to follow the laws and rules of setback. This right of way, according to the survey, I guess my understanding is, is it's thirty-three foot, okay, thirty-three feet. So you take half of that, sixteen and a half feet, from the center line of the travel way, and you measure toward the Morrison's house. You mark that spot, that's the edge of the public easement, that's the land of all of public, we all own that. You measure from there twenty-five foot setback, which the code enforcement in Bucksport has, you're talking over forty feet. Now, I don't know how many of you folks have been out there and drove by the Morsons, but there's no way, is he forty feet? I'm not, I'm not saying that he's in the easement, but I'm saying he is nowhere near the setback rules. So this all started because we have a violation of the setbacks. What are we going to do? Okay, we'll extinguish it right of way? Oh, oh, we can't do that? Well, how about if we move the road? Now we're in compliance, right? It's one thing after another. We have COVID, we have monkey pox, we have this, we have that. What we don't have is, is no one is being in compliance with the rules. And if they were in compliance with the rules, my contention is, we wouldn't be here tonight, ladies and gentlemen, because we wouldn't be driving by Mr. Morrison's bedroom, and he wouldn't be concerned. Now, if the road is ruddy down there, fine as kind, we will improve it. Perhaps I would have already improved it if I weren't spending my money on attorney, defend this course now. My point is, there's no way this can be taken. This is for public, the public likes to use it, obviously, that's why we're here, that's why we had a big crowd here tonight. I don't want any time to spend in money.
Thank you.
For private purpose. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
I want to say something.
Oh, hang on just a second.
The current setback is twenty-five feet. I do not know if the setback was twenty-five feet at the time the house was built.
Sure.
That would have to be investigated. I know the setbacks have changed over the years.
Yes, it was twenty-five feet.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have a question.
Could I get your name, please?
Lisa Sullivan. And I live on Gully. I hate coming up here, but, so Jim is the one that told me to go home and watch the town council, because he told me I was trespassing. So he told me to watch the September eighth town council meeting. And when I watched it, Harold's reasons for removing the public easement was the monkey pox, the COVID, and the farm animals. So is that still what we're looking at, to remove the public easement because of those three reasons?
Nope.
Then why, then I guess I don't.
We're sending you a listing, trying to figure out why we are or we aren't.
Okay, all right. Well, my vote is to keep the public easement.
Thank you.
I live on Gully, and I don't want gates, okay?
Thank you. Anybody else?
Jim Morrison, East Bucksport. My property goes to the edge of the Gully Road, opposite where my house sits. I had to be twenty-five feet from the edge of my property, that's what I was told by the code enforcement officer at the time I went in and got permits. So I'm twenty-five feet, at least, from either side. So my house is set in words, in legal limits, legal bounds, so there's no question that I didn't put it in the wrong place. I had a code enforcement officer there looking at it every time I put a nail in something.
Thank you.
First of all. Now, as far as telling people that I don't want them on my property, they got no reason to be on my property. There's no reason for people to travel through there. They have a perfectly good access, right, where they always had a perfectly good access over on Buck's, the Jacob Buck Pond End, which they used for years, until Mr. Matthew went ahead and improved the roads down at the bottom, and improved actually from my property on down. You couldn't even drive, take a bicycle down through there before he started on it, because it was all winds blowing in over it, and it's just been improved to the point where people can use vehicles on it now. In fact, it's pretty steady usage by a select few people. The rest of the people down in there are not interested in crossing my land. And my brother Pearlie, when he cut wood, he had an old one ton, no doors on it, no fenders, and he hauled one ton loaded at a time up over that gravel hill. I don't know if you've ever seen the gravel hill, but it's, it's, it's not something you'd want to take a car or anything too special on, you know? And it just, there's a hundred reasons. I just plain don't want the public using that, coming across my property. I don't care. That's my reason for shutting it down.
Did you ever get a title opinion on what the, you know, what the right of way on your deed exactly refers to?
The right of way on my deed is for Eastern Fine Paper to be able to access the dam on Thurston's Pond.
You're certain of that, though?
That's where the southeast corner of my property is down there.
Anybody else?
Christina Reiberg, Bucksport resident for twenty-seven years. I feel like I have to address the elephant in the room here. When the town council takes their position, they defend the public and the use and the, the actual public lands of the, the town. And to me, there's a very big conflict of interest here. We have a council member who is asking the council to extinguish the right of the easement, the public easement, for his purpose, for his private purpose. And if I could give the example, because maybe it is a road in the woods that you can envision, but if we had waterfront people who said, their beautiful waterfront here is, is, we love this, but it's, it's littered with people walking by. We want to gate one side and the other side, and you're on the council, please go.
Can you, I, I got to stop you there. You can't, you can't disparage the folks on the council like that.
But I'm saying that, that someone on the council is asking the council.
As a citizen, anybody can come forward, whether you're a council member or not, and ask for something to be looked into.
Okay.
He doesn't vote on the issue.
I, I realize that, but there is other ways to influence besides voting.
Well, I, I, I take exception to that.
Okay.
We, everybody on this council acts independently when any issue comes forward here.
I, I hope so.
And I absolutely take exception to you implying that that doesn't happen, okay?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to say is that the public uses the, the, right of way are the, the town thing, the town walkway, and if, if the town property owners wanted to block that, that wouldn't be right, because that's a, that's a public use, that's a public walkway that the public uses, correct?
I don't know what you're saying, I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're saying.
Okay, the walkway that goes along the water.
Yeah.
That is beautiful, that we've invested in as citizens, our tax dollars went to. There are houses behind, in front of that walkway. And if people wanted to use that for their own private purpose, that would not, that would be an infraction on the public use of the walkway, correct?
Sure.
Okay, so now we have a public easement, the Gully's Road, that connects Jacob Buck Pond to Buck's Mills Road, and it, and creates passage for that, and now we have somebody on the council, Jim Morrison and Harold Morrison, who want to block that easement, the public easement, and make and make it private. That's what I'm saying.
And that's what we're discussing. And that's what we're figuring out whether we're going to do that or not.
That's right, that's right. The other thing is the money that this requires and has required for this whole two and a half months of lawyers talking to surveys, Ms. Lissard's time, our time of trying to go through deeds and maps and, and surveys. And for, we have, the town has spent money, a lot of money on this. We have spent money on this. But you know who hasn't spent money is Mr. Morrison and Harold Morrison. And I believe that this should stop for spending the money. The taxpayers' dollar has to stop because of the, the money that's being spent. Because the, in the end, if, if, if you put this up and try to privatize it, we're gonna fight it. We're gonna fight it again. And so you're spending more money. And so instead of just spending the money, and if I'm a private citizen and I want something changed, I will bring you the survey. I will bring you my lawyer and tell you what I want or what I, I think I deserve. But for the, the town to spend the money makes it very, to me, very wasteful for the, the taxpayers. And I don't think the taxpayers like it.
Thank you.
Hi, Kurt Matthew. I live in Orington, but I own a piece of property in Bucksport, or maybe three, I guess. There's really little effect, in my opinion, of course, of blocking that end of the road. There is three people it really affects, in my opinion. There are several others that, that would not be prohibited to access their property at all. And I think the road can't handle as much traffic as is seen lately. So I would really like to continue the proper way to pursue closing that end of the road, please.
Thank you. Anybody else? Who's up first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, no, you're fine.
Eight, please.
Sorry. Harold Morrison, East Bucksport. You've heard my spiel, and you know what we're up here for. Safety for my family, my friends, my children. I don't need all that traffic going through. I don't want to drop any names. But it's been said that that's a convenient way, if you've been working on your camp all day, to drink a couple of cold beers. And it's easier to go out through there than it is to travel the highway. I don't have that documented. It's been repeated to me. I don't think I want anybody that's had a couple of beers cruising through that doyad. I don't know how to stop it because I'm not law enforcement and I certainly don't have the right to stop a car and check it. Then again, anybody that has the right to go through there, we have not stopped them. I understand there's been some photos brought in showing that we blocked the road. One of the police officers, I think they've been out three times this year, this month. I would like to know if anybody's followed up on it because as far as I know, when they get there, there's no problem. Whoever it is that's causing this calling the cops, the police, doesn't hang around to prove anything. They're simply, in my estimation, making a false report. I don't know, that's only my opinion. I feel as if I'm being bullied, harassed, and deceived into getting rid of, giving up my property that I rightfully own. And I don't think it's right. But whatever is decided, I'll respect that. And I, I would have to go in another direction at that point. As far as spending all kinds of money on it, we don't feel as if we need to because we feel we're right. If, if there's been a lot of money spent on it, that's not our fault. You have a choice, any one of you, to dig into your wallet for anything you feel about. We feel we don't need to. And like I say again, whatever you decide will be respected in East Bucksport.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have one quick question. So we're not, this discussion isn't about the September 8th vote. So are we discussing removing, because right now it's, again, the whole road, right from Jacob Buck over to Bucks Mills? So is this vote tonight...
We are discussing whether we're going to open the process back up again.
Right, so is the discussion on removing the public easement from the entire road?
No.
But, excuse me, I'm sorry. The, the way that it is written, it's the easement on the Gully Road.
The Gully Road.
It, it is the whole...
So you're looking to remove...
The, the discussion is whether they start the process or don't start the process to extinguish that easement. If they, the process were restarted, they could choose to consider only X part of the road or Y part of the road. The, the, we're at the 10,000-foot level right this minute, which is, do they start over on this process at all?
Okay. Thank you, Susan. So tonight's discussion then is about removing the public easement from the entire road?
That's the way the resolves are written.
So...
Excuse me. Why are they written that way?
They're, they're written that way because the definition of, of where all of the, the things started and stopped wasn't done the first time. We, we, there was nothing in our result, our, our action before that, or the motion that definitively said it went from X to Y. The, it's written this way. It gives the council, if you choose to start over again, the ability to make it all of it, half of it, a third of it, whatever. But it doesn't pre-decide what's, how much of it you're looking at. Yes, it wasn't only the portion abandoned in 1981, a portion of it, it wasn't the whole road. Yes, it was.
No, man, no, it wasn't.
According to Alan Gordon...
Pretty sure that that list of roads that was abandoned in 1981 says from this spot to so-and-so's property.
It, there, it said that it went to Jacob Buck Pond, except for the, the Jacob Buck Pond Road, which was still open for seasonal maintenance. That's what the 1981 abandonment was. It abandoned the whole thing except for seasonal maintenance on the end adjacent to Jacob Buck Pond. That's what the, that's what the abandonment says.
Yeah, I don't have any seasonal maintenance. I, I plow it myself. But I'm good with that, I'm very, very good with that. But I just, um, it sounded like you guys were talking about partial road tonight, and that's why I asked the question. So you are looking at whether to remove the public easement or not on the entire...
The, the resolve states to start the process with the consideration of elimination...
Of the entire road.
Of the public easement on the Gully Road.
Okay, that's even worse. Okay, um, thank you.
Okay, I got one other. All right, just want to go over one little thing here. It doesn't seem to me that the Morrison's understand that this is a public easement. That's not their property. If the road is rutted up down there, that's the public easement. It's not their land. They don't seem to understand. But that property under that road, 33 feet wide, belongs to the public, us. So if it's getting rutted, it's not their problem because it's not their land. And, and I'll do my best to try to work on that, we can. But this is not their land. I want that, be very clear to all of you folks. If that's not their property, it's the public's property. Thank you.
Again, I just want to be clear that we're, we're opening the process or deciding whether or not to open the process, right? I think it's been pretty clear that we want to just shut down a portion of it, not the whole Gully Road. So I just, thank you.
I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure that an easement does not transfer ownership. An easement gives you the right to cross, does not give you ownership. I deal with people that give easements to access property all day long, and it doesn't give them the right to own the property just to transfer across it.
Excuse me, but I might disagree. Right-of-ways give you a right to go across private property as a group or an individual. Easements belong to the public. Now, we are not attorneys here, and I understand that, and we're not surveyors, but we can surely get those on board if we need to. But I'm telling you, in my opinion, Mr. Shirley's wrong on this one, easements and right-of-ways, we went over this last council meeting, are totally different. Easements belong to the public. Right-of-ways are a right to go across private property.
Thank you.
They're totally different, thank you.
Is anybody on the council having anything? Oh, sorry.
My name is Sandra. I'm not much of a speaker, but I reside with Jim Morrison. And for years, I lived out there in the eighties. No one's ever used the road back then. I just wanted to make the statement. He said if it's traveled, it's only highly traveled by them. That's it. No one else has ever used that road as far as I can remember. And it's only started being used as of now because it got fixed by Kurt and Kathy. And now he decided to, oh, just, let's just use this end now. He's never done work on fixing it up, but like in the last meeting, he said. That's a false statement.
Thank you.
So, and they did play down there. Everyone played in there. The road was never busy, ever.
Thank you. Anybody on the council have anything? I mean, if, if our process was followed before, do we need to look at the process? You know, to capture everybody in the public process? You know, because if people are walking down there and are they being, are they getting notification?
Notification is required from anyone, for anyone with a legal ownership interest in it, which is all the people who own interest, own property on that road and all the people in that area whose deeds reference the right of access to Gully Road as part of that marsh stream...
Realty trust.
What's that?
Realty trust.
Yes, that, as well as those, that, there would need to be legal notification of, of all of that as well. Our public posting is to cover those people who are not property owners on the road or have deeds in that area. And it would require a public hearing posting on, you know, our website, et cetera, and in the enterprise for X number of weeks. That...
That's what's legally required.
That's the legal requirement.
Because I wonder with a public easement, if the public's using it to walk, we're not catching those people, you know? To, to understand how much of the public's using it, the same with Upper Long Pond, which a lot of people do use. I just think we should look at it the same way as Upper Long Pond, you know, and whether we are getting enough of the public input from people that are walking or, or using it for recreation.
If we reopen this, we pretty much have to have a survey to figure out what's going on.
I don't even know how to answer that. Only because the, what's on the ground is on the ground and has been on the ground for a long time. And the, if you follow the, if we have a survey, then what? Is the town gonna build? If it's not in the right place, is the town gonna build another access? Because the town voted in 81 not to maintain it. So is, the question would be, if you do the, where does a survey take us? It can identify a location, but, but then what's the answer? If the, if the answer, if it's not something, if it's full of three-foot across trees, who does that? Who's, you know what I'm saying? I, I just, I, a survey can identify it, but, but the cost of the survey and then the, what are you gonna do with the results are questions that you would need to answer before you started a survey. Because if you do one, you're leading to something. You know, it would be, it would be pointless to do a survey if you weren't gonna do anything about it after you did it.
It's pretty much my contention that if you survey that...
Jim, I gotta ask you if you're, if you're gonna talk...
Jim Morrison relocated. If you survey that, aren't you, in a sense, doing maintenance? Isn't that part of maintenance?
I'm saying to the council that spending 20 or $25,000 to survey from here to Central out to would do that. And the town voted not to spend any money on that, on maintenance of that road.
Yes, yes, the council in 1981 finally made the decision to abandon the road because they didn't want to do maintenance on it.
That's correct.
Now, if we start doing maintenance on it, aren't we just reversing what they already said?
I, I'm not arguing that. That's why I said that, that doing the survey amounts to an expenditure of money on that road that, that the council or board, selectmen, whatever was in here, determined not to do anymore.
That decision at that time in 81, if I'm not mistaken, stated that when a road is abandoned, a, a road is discontinued, is what it was, discontinued. The land that that road sat on is reverted back to the landowners. And maintenance from that point on is their responsibility. That's what the, that's what the law, main state statutes said.
Gully Road was abandoned. It was not discontinued. The, the terminology in the, in the action for Gully Road was abandonment. And it was abandonment, they used that term because nothing had been done on it for 18 years before they got done, before they stopped. There hadn't been any maintenance on it. In order to abandon, a town has to prove that it hasn't done anything for a certain number of years prior to that in order to let, letting discontinuing it is, doesn't have that years requirement. Abandonment can occur if you can prove that, I think it's 20 years, that they haven't maintained, done anything in any real way to maintain it over that time. And I don't know the answer. I will, I would need to check on what the, whether in an abandonment that the underlying easement, the underlying ownership reverts, but the right of the public to cross it remains because the, the council did not vote to get rid of that.
I'm just establishing, I'm just establishing that the land belongs to me.
Well, that, and that's what I, I, I don't know between discontinued and abandoned, I, I don't, I don't know that answer. You, you said that you've looked that up. I, I haven't, I don't know the answer.
Can I still talk? Are we still open?
Sure.
Don't look so excited, Peter.
What's that?
Don't look so excited.
Every day.
Okay, from listening to what other people have said, I'm gathering that Jim built his house after this 1982. That's what I'm gathering. So I built my house in 2007, knowing there's a public easement down there, right? And there's gonna be people going by and trucks and everything else. And so I built a thousand feet in. And what I don't get is, so Jim built right on the road. He's now, has a problem because someone has improved the road. And now he's complaining because the road is, is improved. More people are using it. because the road is improved, more people are using it, therefore it's time to take away the public easement. I just can't imagine, if I had built down by the road and all of a sudden there's more traffic coming through because people are buying the property, if I came to you guys and said, "I built it here, but now I don't like the traffic, so will you remove the public I just would never have the nerve to say that because I chose to build on that road, just like Jim chose to build on the road. And that is, to me, our decision, right? It's a beautiful road. I just chose to have more privacy than Jim did. And so you can see where a lot of this just doesn't make sense, that we're even having this discussion. We both chose to live on a discontinued road for our own reasons, and we made that decision, right, Jim?
You can direct, you can direct your questions up here to me, though, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm not used to your process. But the whole thing, I just find amazing, and I don't know if I can say this, so you'll stop me if I can't.
How about I stop you right now? If you don't think you should say it, then don't say it.
Well, let me, I just, because a comment that Harold had said-
I'm going to stop you because that, I-
Well, I just want to say, okay, I heard that-
And that's why I want to stop you because you heard.
Okay, I'm going to say, we, I will, I will accept whatever decision you guys make.
Thank you.
Okay? Well, I'm not done. And if you decide that you remove the public easement, I'm not going to go out there and put a road close sign in the middle of the public easement. I just would not do that. And I did come across a road close sign right in the middle of the public easement after it was decided to rescind the vote. And I just hope that that will also be looked into.
Thank you.
I don't know if I have more, but this is becoming fun.
Well, we're getting close to the end of this, for this part of it.
We do live 10 feet from Jacob Buck Pond Road.
All right. You got something else?
Yes, just quick. Harold Morrison, East Bucksport. We were under the impression when Jimmy, that was my mother's house, and it burned, and we rebuilt it. When we did that, the code enforcement officer came out, did his measuring. At that point, it was to everybody's understanding that the gully road belonged to us. It had been abandoned, discontinued, I don't know the technical terms, but it was our property turned back to the landowner. You get a tape measure and go out there from Jimmy's front door or his bedroom, and you measure down to the Bucks Mills Road, which was the highway, he has set back where he needs to be set back. There's no doubt about it. And there again, I'm going to say, I think I'm being bullied, harassed, deceived, into turning what I consider my private life over to the public. I don't care for that, but I will accept whatever is decided.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anything else from the council? Council, so first, we have resolved 202331A to start the process with the consideration of elimination of the public easement on Gully Road. How would the council like to proceed?
Well, you probably want a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Anything further? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion doesn't pass? Second is resolve 202331B to not restart the process with the consideration of elimination of the public easement on Gully Road. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Anything further? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion doesn't pass? Back to square one? All right. Next is resolve 202332 to approve the MRC voting ballot. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Everybody saw the nomination that was put forward? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item nine is resignations, appointments, assignments, and elections. First is local election results for November 8th, 2022.
New elections needed on this list of matters.
Thank you.
To note that the newly sworn or newly elected individuals will be sworn in first meeting in January.
First meeting in January, which date is?
It would happen.
Just sorry. I believe it's the 13th.
It would be the 12th.
12th. Thank you. And from the chair, I'd like to congratulate everybody that did run. Everybody puts forth the effort to run for public office, is putting themselves out there, and I appreciate that. And I also want to publicly acknowledge you and your staff, Jacob, for doing a great job with what was understandably a considerable turnout, so thank you for that.
Yes.
Next is a, could we have it quiet, folks, please? Thank you. Next is approval of quick claims. We have a quick claim deed for Quincy Mittman, map 0009, lot 043. Tax lien's dated 6/21/2017, 6/20/2018, 6/19/2019, 6/30/2020, 6/15/2021, 6/16/2022. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next is quick claim deed for Quincy Mittman, map 009, lot 043.
It's a building.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Tax lien's dated 6/21/2017, 6/20/2018, 6/19/2019, 6/30/2020, 6/15/2021, and 6/16/2022. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item 11 is town manager report.
Paul, may I borrow yours?
Oh, yes.
Never mind.
Okay.
A reminder that the parade of lights will be happening on Saturday, December 10th, and lineup will be at the former mill parking lot starting at 4:30. Persons or groups interested in participating can go to the Facebook page Parade of Lights and Fireworks and click on the registration link, or they can call organizer Chris Grundle at 991-7500. As an added attraction, fireworks will be done from the Fort Knox area directly following the parade. A huge thank you to the Bucksport Garden Club for the beautiful Christmas tree they provided and decorated here in the council chambers, as you noticed it opened in the corner this evening. We have seen a number of applications for general assistance this week related to heating fuel. Those applying do not meet the income guidelines for general assistance, but would be eligible for lie heat funds, which are administered through Down East Community Partners. All of them had contacted that organization, but the appointments given range from January through March, which is of no help for the first half of the winter. I reached out to Senator Collins and Representative Golden's office to express my frustration with the system that has allocated significant additional resources for the lie heat program this year, but which has a bottleneck created by the large increase in the number of people who need to apply, and the staffing issues related to getting those applications completed. Our representatives have been helpful in getting applications moved up, but there are additional roadblocks for those who are not currently on state assistance who apply that need to be removed, and I am continuing to involve our congressional folks in this process. A huge thank you to Leslie Wambacher and her Ghostport crew for a wonderful, well-attended and festive event. Main Street was lined with ghosts and goblins, and the high school band was amazing as well. Many thanks also to Matt McInnis and the Bucksport Y for the trunk-or-treat event at the high school parking lot. More than 1,500 Happy Halloween folks participated in that event. A shout out to the Main Street Bucksport for their efforts on the International Maritime Film Festival held this year. Every event attracts more people to our community, and we appreciate the efforts of the organizations who are working hard to help us. Thanks to Kevin Potter and Jason Stubbs from the Public Works Department for putting a new bench on the Miles Lane Trails across from the Bernal Pool today, and they also made repairs to other benches on the trails. Congratulations to the Alamo Theater for receipt of two major grants toward rebuilding the fly area of the building. With the receipt of the two grants, the Alamo is within $15,000 of reaching its goal for the project. A reminder that Saturday, November 26th, is Small Business Saturday, and we encourage you to patronize the many small businesses that call Bucksport home during this holiday season, as well as year-round. And finally, I am thrilled to report that Officers Axel and Schmidt passed the eight-week drug school at the Maine Criminal Justice Academy and are now fully certified in both search and rescue, as well as drug recognition. We welcome them back on duty in the town of Bucksport. This has been a significant effort on their part, and we thank Officer Schmidt's family for supporting him in this effort, which has taken significant time away from his family. I also want to thank the rest of the Bucksport Police Department members who have coverage shifts in order to maintain coverage, even though we've been down an officer for some time due to this training.
Thank you. Any department have a wanted to report?
I'll let you know that all the walls are built. The three walls remaining on Center Street just keep at the curving, and then the lone behind it is heated, and the fire is done. We're in, it's done in almost two weeks under schedule, and it looks like we're going to be either under or right at it.
Nice job. Very good. Item 13 is public hearings or approval of any licenses or permits. I don't believe we have any. Next is discussion items. Not on the agenda for the council, the public? Anybody from the public, anything not on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask for some clarification. I understand the vote and how it went, but as people were leaving, there was some confusion. And I would just like some clarification moving forward for the gully roads to prevent costs of public safety, questions about the road being closed or blocked. I think some people are still confused under that line, so if you could just make sure that we clarify that for moving ahead.
Because our rules require a four-vote majority for an action, if you don't get that in either way, things stay as they are, meaning that the easement is still open.
Anybody from the council have anything? Not on the agenda? Upcoming committee assignments or public hearings?
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure. And remember, our next meeting is December 15th. You only have one meeting in December.
We should probably do infrastructure for the things that could be on at 6:00. Do we have a, yeah.
So 6:00 o'clock for infrastructure on the 15th. Rich, do you have an economic in?
On the 12th at 6:00.
Economic development on the 12th at 6:00 here in the council chamber?
Yes. And cemetery committee is on, is the first Tuesday?
Yeah, first Tuesday in December.
That's the sixth.
And as was mentioned, one council meeting in December will be on the 15th. I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy time if you have it all. Hopefully, everybody has a good time. With that, take adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? Thank you.